Okay, Ken says he's ready. Good evening and welcome to the July 14th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A meeting was held at 6:00 PM in the Council chambers of City Hall for clarification of the agenda. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission actions will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to redocumentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. There will be a three-minute time limitation for presentations on the commission. Tonight on the agenda, will you do roll call, please, Aslan?
Absolutely.
And will you please disclose if there's a conflict of interest, ex parte communication, and a site visit?
Cindy Anderson?
Present.
Do you have any conflicts?
Oh, no, I do not. But I'm aware.
Mr. Chando?
Present, and I have nothing to disclose.
Jeremy Marley?
Present, I have nothing to disclose.
Shinku Ru?
Present, and I have nothing to disclose.
And Richard Phillips and Taylor Wood are excused or may show up a little later. It's ring.
This evening's agenda was amended, and I would like to entertain a motion to accept the P&amp;Z regular meeting amended agenda for July 14th, 2021.
I move to accept the P&amp;Z regular meeting amended agenda for July 14th, 2021.
Second.
A motion by Anderson, a second by Marley. Aslan, will you please call vote?
Anderson?
Yes.
Marley?
Yes.
Chando?
Yes.
Ru?
Yes.
Move the pairies.
Thank you. Agenda item number five will not be heard this evening. It has been postponed till a later date, and the commission agreed to hear agenda item number six first and then move to the public hearings for agenda items three and four. Agenda item number five is a preliminary plat for Iron Eagle Estates Division III subdivision. Ron Dykman has submitted an application for a preliminary, preliminary plat to develop 3.06 acres, more or less, into 10 residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located near South Valley overpass of the Portonup River. At this time, I would like to ask staff to come forward and present. No?
Can you give the minutes after this?
Oh, sorry, I'm just jumping right in. And I'm going backwards, too. We could just start all over.
Well, good. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. My name is Carl Anderson. I'm a senior planner here with the City of Pocatello, Planning and Development Services Department. You have before you for consideration a proposed preliminary plat for Iron Eagle Estates Division III subdivision. This request was submitted by Ron Dykman, and the engineer listed on the application is HLE Engineering. The proposed subdivision is located north of Bogey Lane and north of Iron Eagle Estates Division II. The proposal calls for the plating of 3.06 acres, more or less, into 10 lots in a zone residential medium density, single-family. The proposed minimum, or the minimum lot size for a single-family dwelling in the RMS zoning district is 5,000 square feet. The smallest buildable lot is 7,405 square feet. Staff has reviewed this application and finds that the proposed Iron Eagle Estates Division III is compliant with all applicable standards of City Code 1620050, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report. And then you'll see Planning and Development Services staff report in there, and then any questions related to Public Works, their memo is also in there as attachment to the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time.
Commission, any questions? No. Thank you, Carl. At this time, I would like to ask that you guys, I'm like stone-thrown off because everything has been changed tonight, so the applicant would come forward to present the project, please.
Jose Navas, 1785, Scottsdale Drive, Pocatello. Basically, pretty straightforward, just like Carl said, continuation of Iron Eagle Divisions Two, one and two. Basically, the same standard design, the continuation of the same design except for that south edge water retention zone, which the road, Mulligan Road, will slope down for a water retention zone on the south edge of there. I'll try to answer any questions anybody may have. Kind of got thrown into this last minute, but yeah. Just seven lots in the north on the block two there, and three lots on the block one with, like I said, 25-foot wide retention zone in the south and 10-foot wide utility easements, as well as a 15, utility easement along north of Mulligan Road there.
Commission, do you have any questions? With no further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat application from Ron Dykman, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 16.20.50 Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions listed in the staff report.
I will second that.
A motion by Ru and a second by Anderson. Aslan, will you call vote? Ru?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Chando?
Yes.
Marley?
Yes.
At this time, I would like to skip back to agenda item number two, the approval of minutes. The commission may wish to approve the meeting minutes from the clarification in regular meetings. Thank you. From June 23rd, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Oh, second down motion.
A motion by Marley, a second by Ru. Aslan, will you call vote?
Marley?
Yes.
Ru?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Chando?
Yes.
We will now open the, we are going to open the public hearing. I will ask that everyone please silence their cell phones. There will be a 10-minute limit on the application presentation. I will mention that he will be going through 16 and 17 at the same time, so we can double that up. There will be a three limit, a three-minute limit on public testimony. Names and addresses are required for those presenting and testifying. Questions or comments should be pertinent to the application and be addressed to the commission. As this is a public hearing, there should be no questions, comments, or applause from the audience. Should the meeting go longer than 8:00 PM, the commission will take a scheduled 10-minute break. Commission members must make their decision regarding the application on facts already in the record and information presented at the public hearing. Conflicts of interest, site visits, and ex parte contacts by commission members will be acknowledged. Protocol requires that the commission members and the audience be recognized by the commission chair prior to speaking. The agenda items are a site-initiated text amendment of Title 16 subdivision regulations and a city-initiated text amendment of Title 17 zoning regulations. I would now like to declare the public hearing open. At this time, I would like to invite applicant staff to the podium to present for us.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Carl Anderson again for the record, PDS Department. I am the lead on this, but this is a department effort. I will do my best to keep this to 10 minutes. So, just so the commission's aware, this is something that you will be seeing frequently moving forward. Our director has basically provided us with direction to keep track of things in code that we can improve upon, that are not enforceable, you know, to align our zoning ordinance with our comprehensive plan and to correct errors as we come across them. So, we'll be seeing probably one or two of these a year. So, yet before you, a proposed amendment to Title 16, our subdivision regulations, and Title 17, our zoning regulations. On July 8th, 2021, staff brought the proposed changes to City Council for a work session and received direction to proceed with the changes to Titles 16s and 17s. So, they went to City Council last week for a work session. Staff identified 17 local developers, engineers, architects to review the proposed changes and provide comments. To date, we've received two written comments as part of that initial outreach, which are attached to both application packets for the commission's review. All notice and requirements for this, these text amendments have been met, and no written or verbal comments have, additional written or verbal comments have been received at this time. The proposed changes were reviewed by the city's legal departments, and no substantial concerns were raised by the city's legal department. And I will diverge from there just a little bit and just cover Title 16, and then ask if it is amendable to the chair that we take action on Title 16 once complete and then move on to Title 17. So, just to kind of get started, so I'm going to keep things at a high level, but if you have questions through this, I just asked, feel free to stop me at the end. So, under 1602, 020, under applications and fees, we are recommending that we require only one set of full-size sets of plans, where code currently requires two. The city's records retention system is moving digitally. This will allow for all corrections on the one set to be scanned into the record prior to returning the paper set back to the applicant for corrections. As it currently stands, we get two sets, all departments make corrections on both sets, and we return one to the applicant, and the city hangs on to one. We've kind of moved to already taking that one set, and we'll scan them in for our records, and we do anticipate that hopefully we'll be moving to some sort of digital process moving forward. Under Title 1602, 030, preliminary plat applications middle, we are requiring that a plat detail the entire area scheduled for development, where the proposed subdivision is only a portion of a larger tract of land intended for subsequent and eventual development. This change will allow staff to review all phases of the development at the time of preliminary plat, ensuring that all review criteria will be met through each phase of the development. This will allow for the city to plan for efficient utilities and transportation connection, as well as to mitigate potential traffic impacts. This change may also reduce the amount of time required for a developer to complete the permitting process, as combined with the changes to the expiration planning and zoning commission's decision under 1620070. So, with that, each phase, once each phase is recorded, it essentially restarts the clock on the expiration of the preliminary plat with that development. There are some additional tweaks in that section that I will get to. Additionally, this would be new, but the city staff is proposing that a requirement be included, that all preliminary plat subdivisions require a public hearing. This change will bring the city in line with the practice currently adopted by many other cities within the state of Idaho, as outlined in Attachment B. Currently, there is no opportunity for public comment during the subdivision process unless requested by an affected person, as permitted by Idaho Code and current city ordinance. The current process does not allow the opportunity for public input outright and creates a situation in which an application may be delayed several weeks if a hearing is requested. By requiring a public hearing, the city will be aligning its practice with that of other cities in the state of Idaho, facilitating transparency and reducing the potential for delay to an application. And I would like to clarify, too, that this is not a state code requirement that subdivisions have a public hearing. This is a recommendation that we're seeing from best practice and our experience processing these applications. Under 1602, 060, Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, we are recommending that the sections referencing a commission's recommendation be amended to be a commission's decision on a preliminary plat, where there is opportunity for either the applicant or an affected person to appeal the commission's recommendation. The appeal will now be that of a decision. Where the preliminary and final plat are two separate applications, there will be a decision on both the preliminary and the final plat. Under our current process, there is no final action on a preliminary plat, and so where there's an appeal process, this would potentially close a potential route if a recommendation were to be appealed. Under 1602, 070, expiration of planning and zoning commission's recommendation, as previously mentioned, we're proposing to amend references from recommendation to decision, and staff also anticipate that more preliminary plats will be brought forward in as phases. It is proposed that if a plat is being phased, the preliminary plat shall expire two years following the date of the approval of the final plat for the previous phase. This will, this will create some flexibility on behalf of the developer during the amended plating process and reduce the potential for additional meetings on the preliminary plat that may be necessary. Add the ability for the Planning and Zoning Commission to grant a one-year extension on this little deadline of the final plat, as well as also in that text. Under 1624, 030, I'm going to pause really quick to catch my breath. I apologize, it hasn't been going pretty fast, but.
We'll pause the clock.
So, under 1624, 030, final plat application requirements, we are similar to preliminary plat, requiring that only one set of full-size plans be submitted, where code currently requires two. And then under 1624, 060, final plat application review, allow for some slight flexibility on the increase in the number of lots at the time of final plat. I believe that's 5%, whereas current doesn't allow for any, like, this would be for a larger-scale development that would have a 5% increase for an additional lot. Just allow for some flexibility there. And require that all development shall comply with the phasing in sequence, as shown and approved at the time of preliminary plat. Any change in phasing would require reapproval by the director. This would ensure the city standards continue to be met throughout the entirety of the development. That completes a summary of the amendments within Title 16, our subdivision regulations. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. I've tried to keep my summary as comprehensive as possible, but I doesn't mean that includes everything, so.
Can I ask something?
Yes.
You, when you were talking about the changing the wording from recommendation to a decision, you said that there was like a loophole that you were closing up. What was happening?
So, basically, what's happening is there is no final action on the preliminary plat, and it creates a situation in which you can appeal a recommendation. And just kind of going through that process with our legal department reviewing that, it was determined that that really should be a decision. Otherwise, the appeal would go to City Council, and it's rather unclear as far as would they be overturning the appeal or the recommendation? Would they be remanding the recommendation back to P&amp;Z and so forth? So, just kind of clarifying that what's being appealed, where the council hears a final plat on the same application later, which they make a decision on. So, this would change that preliminary plat from the recommendation to the decision. Just provide, hopefully providing some clarity to that.
Thanks.
Yes?
So, I have a follow-up question with regards to Chapter 16.24. On 16.24.60 with regards to final plat application review, I know there was an addition with regards to the process under 1624.60A5. Has any developer kind of raised concerns or issues with regards to the additional approval process?
That is, that would go under the, so this would fall under that substantial conformity process, where we as staff, when we get to final plat, we review for the, to ensure the number of lots has not increased or a significant change in the configuration, street alignment has changed significantly, additional streets are proposed. Basically, if it fails one of these, it usually needs to go back to the preliminary plat. This additional requirement, where we're proposing that preliminary plats bring in full tract of land, rather than kind of piecemeal as it goes forward, this would allow for some modification to the phasing schedule of that, which would be reviewed by our director to that. And on that specific item, we have not received comments concerned about that. We did have one comment from Ryan Satterfield, who brought up that changing practice, and staff has spoken with Mr. Satterfield on that.
Okay.
Any other questions, commission?
Can I ask about that conversation? Like, was Ryan Satterfield satisfied with that?
I really don't feel comfortable putting words into somebody else's mouth. It seemed to be a productive conversation, but his comments are included in your packet.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions, commission? Has there been any additional correspondence received, Aslan? Not to my knowledge, they would have been directed to Carl.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge, and I haven't made aware of any other.
Okay. So, at this time, I would like to start public testimony. Just a reminder, when you come to the podium, please state your name. Remember to address the commission, rather than the audience or the applicant. You will have three minutes. Keep your questions and comments pertinent to the application. Just a reminder, we're on Code 16 right now. And please don't duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered by the previous testimony. At this time, I would like to invite anybody providing testimony by those supporting the application to come forward.
Mine is more Title 17.
Okay.
I have my comments, so.
I would invite anybody providing testimony by those uncommitted on the application. Invite anybody providing testimony by opponents to the applicant. Applicant, any rebuttal? I declare the public hearing closed. How would the commission like to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to Title 16 subdivision regulations, find that amendments in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the criteria for title text and map amendments listed in Chapter 17.2.170?
No, 16.
Yeah, 16.
If I may, the criteria listed out there, the criteria established for a text amendment, which are contained in Title 17.
Okay. And with the inclusion of amendments to, additional amendments to Title 16.20.60, I think it's to C2A, where the wording has been left as recommendation, I believe the staff wants to change it to decision in conformity with other plots.
That is correct.
A second.
A motion by Ru, a second by Marley. Aslan, will you call the vote, please?
Ru?
Yes.
Marley?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Chando?
Yes.
Ru?
Thank you. We will now move on to 17. At this time, I would like to invite the staff to discuss 17.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so summary, to Title 16, I'm going to just keep pretty high level through the summary. I do ask, if you have questions, please hold them to the end, and I will try to get through all these proposed changes in 10 minutes, so. Under, so just beginning linearly, so under Title 17010150 definitions, we are proposing to add definitions for lot, block, and block face, which will come into play when reviewing the proposed changes to the original townsite overlay. And then also revise the definition of right-of-way, where the current definition refers to the definition of a street, and change the reference of thoroughfare to right-of-way under the definition of alley. Under the definition of alley, there's a reference to thoroughfare, modify that to reference the right-of-way. Under 1702, land use decisions, 03300, align the decision and public hearing matrix with the proposed changes to Title 16 subdivision regulations, requiring a public hearing for preliminary plat applications, and modify the commission recommendation to a decision by the commission. Under 1703 zoning districts, 03500, district use table, amend note Section 1703600A4 regarding non-permitted uses and removing the section stating unless granted by an exception by the city council. There's currently not a city council process for land uses within, with, exception process for land uses within the zoning ordinance, and this is the only reference to that. The process to allow for a non-permitted use would be to amend the zoning designation at a subject location or through text amendments, both of which would require two public hearings. In both cases, City Council would have the final decision on that. Correct Note 7 to allow for residential uses outright, where storefront commercial uses are provided in commercial general and central commercial zoning districts. You'll see the current section there also has a, the word "new" in parentheses. That seems to be a scripter's error that was carried over as it was codified, and this also was intended to be modified during the last recommendation, but it happens, so. Under 1704 overlay areas, so specific to the resource protection overlay, under sensitive land standards within the resource protection overlay, staff's proposing to amend Section 1704.170B applicability to provide clarity on which areas listed under subsection B1 are subject to the standards contained within this section of code. So, that's providing some clarity when we're talking deer-winter range versus deer-summer range versus deer-limited range. As you go forward through that section of code, there's not a lot of clarity as far as what would all be required and if it would all apply to sensitive lands, and it's been somewhat unclear as far as the transition from the mapping that's occurred over time as this ordinance has been in place. So, we're trying to provide some clarity as far as when the criteria within there would be applicable and when it would not be. That's the intent there. Under 1704.220, original townsite overlay, we're proposing to amend the setback requirement listed in 1704.220 to allow for the option to set back new development within the OTO to the average existing setbacks for the abutting block face. This will allow for greater flexibility within the OTO and increase compatibility with surrounding properties while promoting more infill development. Remove 1704.220B4. Basically, all accessory structures within the OTO would be subject to the accessory structure standards of our code. Currently, they have an additional restriction where they are limited to accessory structures as a whole. If you combine all accessory structures, the footprint can't exceed the footprint of the primary structure on a property. And in the original townsite, they have an additional restriction that instead of being 100% of that, they would limit it further to 75%. So, this falls under that category of enforceability and reasonableness. So, basically, they would be subject to the same accessory structure standards there that all other accessory structures throughout the city would be. Amend 1704.220B5 to Section B4 to allow for on-street parking spaces aligning with the property frontage to be counted towards 50% of the required parking spaces. This will only apply to single-family and two-family development and will provide greater flexibility in the OTO to promote infill, clarifying the applicability for the type of development under sections A through D and certain section E, reducing the parking lot setback requirement for the siding rear yard setbacks. Amend 17, sorry, I'm going to back up to that just a little bit. Part of that is also to promote infill development within our original townsite. The original townsite lots of the city of Pocatello were 30 by 140, and moving forward, you've gotten a lot of parcels that have been quit claimed and sectioned off over time, and providing a parking space, for example, parking at two parking spaces for a single-family development or two for multifamily development, becomes difficult to provide the parking required for infill development. So, I'm trying to add just a little bit more flexibility in there related to parking in the original townsite. It's possible that our parking ordinance is something that we take up in the future, but this is something that we're looking at right now for our original townsite. Under 1704.220B6, to be Section B5, clarifying that planar strips are required in the original townsite and include some flexibility for staff in the enforcement of this section, the director and the public works director. Basically, it's to take in the context of the areas that they're looking at when enforcing that section. 1705, development standards. This is our slope standards. We're proposing to, staff is proposing to delete the requirement for a visual analysis where there are no objective standards through which to review a visual analysis within code under our slope standards at this time. Remove the requirement for a building designation on every lot with a natural geography of 15% or greater, where a geotechnical report is required and reviewed by the building department. Remove the reference to lot coverage under Note 1, where there are no lot coverage requirements. Provide clarity and align with current practice on where the remaining land area that comes from the calculation in the table located in our slope standards, not to be disturbed shall be administered. Basically, providing that area that not to be disturbed shall be designated with no build line, aligning with our current practice. Under 1705.300, infill and redevelopment standards, amend Section 1705.310, propose to clarify the purpose of the infill development centers and align with multiple policies and objectives listed in the 2015 comprehensive plan update. Amend same section 310 to clarify the criteria determining an infill development parcel to increase. to increase, increase flexibility while requiring that utilities be available to serve the subject site in question. Amend 340A and B to remove the requirement that the average of the sizes of all lots in the proposed subdivision not be less than the minimum. The requirements, the current standard does not provide an incentive for infill and creates a mix of larger lots and smaller lots. A further reduction would be permitted when open space is provided as outlined in the proposal. And then combine residential and multifamily infill and development standards under section 1705350 to align with the city's current review practice and provide for flexibility. And those were previously also broken into two separate sections. We've put them into one. Under 1705400 lighting standards, proposing to remove the section regarding lighting levels to comply with the illuminating engineering society of North America, where the cost of these standards are prohibitive to residents of Pocatello. These standards are updated periodically and are not easily accessible and has become difficult to enforce through our current enforcement process due to some of the issues arising from that. Under 1705600, amend 610 residential development standards, B4, to allow for some flexibility where appropriate. That is where the front door shall face the street upon which the property is addressed for residential development. That was recently changed and seems to be working well for our single-family homes on a lot, having the front door orient towards the street upon which it's developed, although when we are getting multifamily development moving forward, it comes into question as do all the buildings have to face the street on that one parcel, or is it just the buildings fronting the street immediately? So allows for some discretion there to apply that reasonably. Under 1706 special use standards, accessory structures, clarify the requirements for accessory structures. Structures that do not require building permits would not have a setback requirement under this proposal, however, they would still need to meet building code requirements. So accessory structures under 200 square feet already do not require a building permit. However, those structures under the current code, they would have to have a three-foot setback from the siding rear property line. Under the proposal, they would not have to have that setback and could be built to the property line hypothetically, but they would still need to meet the building code requirements, so fire separation. Part of that, staff often doesn't know when an accessory structure is placed and becomes an enforcement, it's very difficult to enforce, so. That's all that I had, 16 seconds to spare. So with that, I'll answer any questions that the commission.
Excellent. I forgot to open the public hearing. Should I do it now, before people start speaking?
I can do it again.
Yeah, you can, yeah. It's, yeah. And you can. Okay. I would now like to declare the public hearing open. Sorry. Commission, do you guys have any questions for staff? I didn't catch this earlier, and I may just be looking at it wrong, but I want to make sure that it's correct before we go any further. So if you look at 1704220, which is the original townsite overlay, and you want to remove B4, is there a B4? Because I say, I see A1, 2, 3, B, C, D, 1 through...
Did you say 1704220? Is that right? I just want to make sure.
Yes. I'm just wondering if that's supposed to be D instead of B? So that's the same for all of those B4s, B6 and B5, correct? Should all be D?
One moment, please.
I promise I didn't see that before.
Those should be referenced in section D rather than section B within the original townsite overlay.
Commission, will you please make note of that for when you would like to proceed with a motion?
So can I just clarify quickly? So everything in 1704.220, where it says a B, it should actually be a D, so the B4, B5, B4, B6, and the B5 should be Ds. Is that what I heard?
So, under the summary of proposed amendments, the proposed amendments reference 1704220b, and all those references in the staff report should be section D. They are correct in the red line attachment.
Okay, just the summary just needs to be...
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure it didn't affect any outcomes from today, and we took care of it now. So has there been any additional correspondence received?
Not that I'm aware of. Aisling, did we have any others on Title 17?
I have not received anything.
Okay. At this time, I would like to invite anyone proceeding to the testimony by those supporting the application. Please remember to state your name.
All right. Well, good evening. I'm gonna go first. It looks like I'm Mark Dalquist, and I'm the executive director at Neighbor Works Pocatello, 206 North Arthur. Want to just first compliment the staff for, there's a lot there that Carl summarized for you that you saw. So, in a busy time to take a very deep dive with the regulations there, I have to commend them for that. And overall, you know, I am in support that, I think it's very forward-looking on the changes that are being made to Title 17. It's really a lot there is matching the city's comprehensive plan, and we always felt that the comprehensive plan and the actual code, when we looked at those together, when we were putting projects together, they weren't in alignment, and I think they're gonna be much more succinct now with really what's called out for in the comprehensive plan. And a couple of things in the comprehensive plan is on the infill development that it's cited in there, that 33% of the new population growth by the end of the decade could be supported by infill development. So I think that's really great for the city where we're not sprawling and using new open spaces there, that whatever we can do to develop the core of the community is great. It follows the smart growth principles that, I do a lot of grant writing in my job, that a lot of our grant funders like things, like when you're using existing infrastructure, you're close to bus lines, you're not having people walk a long distance, like if we're developing on the fringes of the community versus in the core, the grocery stores and post offices and things are close. So really follows along with the smart growth principles. We do a lot of infill development at Neighbor Works, and this will help us with many, many projects going forward that, a lot of times that when we do a development, we are landlocked and there's not a lot of options. So the reductions in the lot sizes and the setbacks really helps us out with being in a tricky landlock situation. And on the setbacks, the front setbacks, really like those overall, that I did notice in the wording there that you take the average of the existing homes in the surrounding block face. We would just, a change I would recommend is rather than saying the average, maybe the mean instead. And that's because, for example, if you look at maybe 10 homes that are in the block face, sometimes in our older neighborhoods, you get some that are wayway setback to the alley, and so that one could really throw you off. And so just would encourage the use of maybe median instead of average. Otherwise, the parking and, you know, the leeway with the different lot sizes that, you know, overall very good and support of what's been laid out here.
Thank you. Is there anybody else providing testimony supporting the application?
My name is Ben Ledford. I'm an architect at Myers-Anderson Architects, 122 South Main Street, also on the Historic Downtown Pocatello Board and the Design Committee down there. I would echo some of what Mark said, just that a lot of this, I think, is going in a great direction, and my comments will all sort of follow a similar pattern of hoping that maybe we can carry some of these changes even further in the future. It sounded like there may be, you know, ongoing evaluation of the code. So the parking, for example, allowing developments to count 50%, you know, up to 50% of their on-street parking that's available toward their requirement, I think that's great. My questions would be, why does that only apply to one and two single-family homes? Why couldn't that apply to a fourplex, you know, or a corner shop or something, you know, that can also take advantage of that on-street parking? And also, why couldn't that be permissible in other areas of town outside of the original townsite? You know, it makes for a good urban environment in the original townsite, why would we not allow it in other areas? Similarly, with the setbacks, providing some flexibility there in the setbacks is great. I would just say, as someone living in Old Town, there are a lot of instances that would be out of conformance with these requirements, but that make for charming urban environment anyway. I live right around the corner from the doughnut shop that's built right up to the corner, and it's next to a house. And according to these requirements, it would have to be 15 feet back from the street because it's next to a residence, which is like the whole width of the building, you know, it just wouldn't exist. And so there are those small parcels that we can have more development on, have more activity and make more use of our existing infrastructure if we, as I say, take some of these maybe in future, in future amendments even further. And similar comment on reducing lot sizes. We have the option with infill now to reduce it down to, I guess, 40%, which is great. And to me, again, it just raises the question of why, why do we have such high minimum lot sizes? Again, where we have a lot of lots that aren't conforming in our older neighborhoods. Typically, you'd see it on, in the side of a block, or between the alley and the street, it may be divided in half or even into three, and they are small lots, but, you know, they don't harm the neighbors and people have been living happily in them for 100 years. So, again, just, I commend the staff on taking initiative to go through this and then look at some of these things, and just hoping that maybe we can take some of these good ideas, even a next step further, applying outside the Old Town overlay, or taking an even harder look at whether some of these setback and lot size requirements are really, you know, serving to make a better urban environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony by those supporting the application? Is there any testimony by those uncommitted on the application? Is there any testimony by opponents to the application? Can we get a rebuttal by the applicant, please?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, one of the things we did look at, we did receive comments regarding looking at, I believe, the median rather than the average through there. For those lots, you'll notice that it's 15-foot setback or providing the average. Part of that, that 15-foot setback has been in the original townsite, I believe, since we've had that overlay. And then, you know, like I've said before, part of this is, part of the mentality on our zoning ordinance is to treat it a little bit more like a living document, so we can adapt to these changes. It's staff's recommendation that it would be the average at this time rather than median, but we could look at that further. I would like to back up just a little bit to the process, too. So, part of this, as previously mentioned, we are directed to keep a running list of these items as we go along, and part of this was to, some of the items that we looked at in here, specifically to the infill development standards and the original townsite overlay, were inspired from the proposed Bonneville Townhomes project as well in the early phases, where the existing code basically wouldn't permit that type of infill development that you could see there. And so we, as staff, did take a deeper dive into that section of code while we were in there. One thing I would like to point out is, and so I've been here for about four and a half years, and in the time that I've been here, I don't believe we've had a project take advantage of our infill development standards. You know, it's something that, you know, does, hopefully provide developments where there's already existing utilities and public infrastructure, provide more of that connectivity and that density here in town where it's easily served. And so that is something we, partially from that and partially from the fact that it's not something that's been taken advantage of. So that's part of the impetus for some of those changes in there as well, to respond to some of the types of developments we're starting to see. So hopefully, we'll be seeing more infill development come forward as well. You know, certainly, looking at parking standards throughout the city of Pocatello is something that can undertake. I would recommend that that be the parking ordinance on its own, to take that forward to make sure that it's calibrated correctly. I do believe, I don't have my code book in front of me, but I do believe there is some parking relief for commercial developments in the original townsite. I don't remember the exact calibration, and I could be mistaken, but I do believe there is some relief for commercial in the original townsite as well. And then for commercial developments in the original townsite, it's not if they're across the street from a residential development per se, it's if they're across the street from a residential zoning district that it does increase that setback. That's something that we have talked about in our department, but we are not proposing to change that at this time. You know, it does have the similar type of relief there, though, where you can look at the average block face through there and provide an or if that setback doesn't trigger. So that would apply to those commercial types of development, too. But yeah, that kind of concludes what I have.
Commission, any questions for staff after the rebuttal?
I do have one. So if this gets approved tonight, then if there's a real push to change that average to mean or median or...
Median.
Then, then could that be visited later?
Yes, absolutely. That is something we could look at later, and if the commission is so desirous, we could take that back and look at that again as, as staff, and potentially bring that forward to council on August 5th, if that's the commission's direction tonight.
I have a question as well on the same line as that. What are the additional complications that that provides median versus average? I mean, to me, it seems like either way, you still have, you have a variable number that you're working with, and so is there additional amount of work that goes in as a contractor to accommodate that, or is there an additional amount of work as the city that goes into that to accommodate that, or is it the same on either side of that, that variable number?
So that study would be provided by whoever the developer is in that scenario, looking for those building permits for that. We had historically, actually, had the average in the original townsite that the height be set, and it was a requirement rather than an or, be set at the average of the block face. And that, where again, where that was a requirement actually became rather challenging and wasn't very flexible for some of those infill-type developments. It is something that we could look at, it's more of an administrative, it's something that we talked about as a team, and our recommendation is that it be the average at this time. We could certainly revisit it and look at the mean.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question comes down to, is it more challenging or the same amount of challenging either way? Because I mean, if it's, if there's no impact either way, then that tips whether or not I would approve or approve tonight, right? Because if it's more challenging for everybody to go one way versus the other way, then then obviously that's something that we want to avoid. If we're looking at basically the same amount of effort that everyone has to put in to accommodate that, then I see no reason not to do that.
I think it's really, the question is more on variance, right? So I mean, the only reason you would use median over average or mean is because, you know, the developers or kind of the people, I guess the question, I guess we can rephrase it, is like, what better incentivize the developers? Because, you know, the whole purpose of kind of rewriting this is, is to encourage people with, you know, to be involved in infill development. So I think, you know, if the staff believes that, you know, there's really, when you're kind of recommending average over median, it's like you're saying variance is very low, so it wouldn't kind of have a big impact. But I'm kind of thinking like the public... But I'm kind of thinking like the public is saying, you know, variance is actually pretty high.
I'm just going to make sure that these are questions towards staff and not a conversation commission should be having with each other before we need to close the public hearing.
Okay, so the question I have is, from your perspective, is there a lot of variance?
I don't want to subjectively say that there is a lot of variance. We have not done that analysis to look at that, to see if there is in fact a lot of variance. Part of the thought on that was if there are several homes that are setback from the street, part of the intent of that alternative setback is to match the fill of that block face. And if there are multiple along that that are going to be setback, then hopefully, you're providing something that is more along with the average rather than potentially throwing out that outlier. So part of that's where that's coming from, is where part of the reason we landed on that. And again, if the commission is desirous of staff to review that further, we would be happy to take a deeper dive into that. But we have not done that analysis, you know, potentially, that's something we could do using Ezra in the future, just to kind of look at where that, what that is exactly and to calibrate that further.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff from commission? I declare this public hearing closed. I guess I'll start by saying, talking about the mean and the median. And I think, to me, it's to provide the developer with more room to put more stuff, right? If they can be closer. I see that if we go with the median over the mean, it's not going to be as aesthetically pleasing as if you don't, right? There's going to be more variation in the building faces? Like, I'm just throwing out my thoughts to give you guys thoughts on that. So that's where I don't see it as. It would help the developer as in maybe they could put some buildings closer to the street so they could have more buildings higher density, but not necessarily what would be aesthetically pleasing to the road. So that's just my thought on it.
Yeah, honestly, my thoughts on that are that it's, it comes down to if our effort is towards the developer, but also, you know, city beautification matters. Is there, is it going to be a deterrent versus, are people going to look at that and say, oh, that's not a thing that I want to do because of this? Or is it going to be a thing that everybody can get behind and just say, yes, this much or that much? And that's the challenge.
Right, I see it as we can put X buildings instead of X plus one buildings there. So that's just my, any other thoughts on the setbacks?
All right. And if I have to think out loud?
Yeah, we're thinking out loud. We're not held to anything.
I guess, I think the question I have is like, I would like to see more data. I mean, the thing is like, these are presumptions, right? So we don't really have data in front of us. So I think, like, I think we're kind of thinking on all, on the same wavelength in a sense that we understand the staff's position and their purpose of this aspect.
And their intention, right? I mean, I think we're all on the same page with that. The intention is to simplify this and make it better for developers and the city all around. I mean, so it's not a...
I would say, I mean, we saw all the examples of text from other cities and other communities. I'm sure they've had numerous conversations with them. And I think that if it was a huge difference, it would have come up before this point. I would just, that's what I would say.
I would agree.
I think, unless Cindy wants to kind of, I think my kind of thinking is, I guess, and this once again, thinking out loud. I think on top of me, I'm kind of, I would like more data, but also, at the same time, I don't want to delay the effort. That's, I think that's a really important aspect, and this is the first step into the process. And I think we're making a, I think the staff under the new director is making the right, I think it's the right direction, and we can see that from the people that have supported. So if we do kind of ask that condition, I feel maybe this is potentially may drag on. So maybe like Carl mentioned, maybe we can kind of...
If we could approve and then also have a requirement that they do the study so that we know the difference. So that's not...
And to me, this is a working document. We've had this document for a week and a half to look at it. I know they've been working on it for years. So it's not like our decision tonight is said final, and it will be the mean or median for the rest of the, you know, so...
Yeah, you may.
Sorry, I do not mean to interject. I really just want, I feel like this is important. I feel like I should clarify that the cities that we looked at that are in that attachment were strictly pertaining to our subdivision ordinance and just looking at whether or not they had public carriagings and the occasional...
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So I really just wanted the commission to know that that's what we're looking at when looking at the pure saves.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So I stand corrected. So I think, so as of right now, I mean, I think we can approve all these if we wanted to and leave that one out for now. But if we leave it out, what does it state right now? I think maybe that's what we should look at. And then how is that going to affect projects that want to start building right now, right?
Honestly, I'm totally okay with approving it just as it is.
I agree.
I would just like to see more data on that in the future so that that decision can be made as an educated decision. So that we're not making the decision today, and that's the final, you know, then it gets lost in the way. But somebody's concerns have been brought up here, and if it's a viable concern, then I think that spending a little bit of time to find the data on that may be worthwhile for our other developers.
That's why I asked if we approved it now, if it could be revisited later, just that one aspect.
I think, I'm wondering what our bylaws state, but it might be the case where the chair might be asked, I don't know if this is the case, but maybe have the staff follow up, like in several months' time or after like a year or so, and then kind of say like, we raised this issue a year like or six months ago. Has there any follow-up from your side? And has the developers have raised any concerns or issues with this? Has this been an incentive or disincentive and clarification?
Would that timeframe be determined by the director or by us?
Us, I think it would be by us.
And what would you feel like that would be? What would a reasonable timeframe be to be able to have that data?
So our long-range senior planner is who would be conducting that analysis. And it would just follow along that takes for him to run that and for us to evaluate it. I do not know the answer as far as specific, if that would be...
Yeah, I'm not looking for specific, like a generalized...
Yeah, I don't know. It's the short version. I do, I will say, I do think there are lots of different options the commission has available to them. It could be something as Q recommended, bring it back forward to you. These are amendments we'll be bringing forward. Something doesn't work, we're trying to be proactive to fix it. If it's something that you'd like to see bring back before we take it forward, we could do that, too. So we've got lots of options.
Okay.
So this is just what I'm thinking. If we leave it as is right now, how it states, I mean, we could approve everything else that we don't see any concerns with and leave this one as is. It's worse than if we change it to average right now and then readdress it later to be the mean or the median, sorry. I mean, because it's more restricting if we leave it as is. So I would say, leave it as proposed by the staff with a six-month time period to review it or something like that and come back at it. Does that...
I agree.
I think so.
So that is going to be, I just want to make sure we know the code for anybody who wants to make a motion. Just 1704-2020 talks about the setbacks because it's a table, just that first bullet.
D2. Is that correct? It's D2?
Yes, thank you. I was going to move on to another comment, as long as we're good on this. There was a comment about off-street parking and why that was only one and two family residents and not four plexes. And I guess the first thing that jumped out to me is because they take up more parking spaces. They need more parking spaces, and in some places, I mean, it's hard to find parking in the original town site anyway. So that would be for me that why? Are any other thoughts on that?
And where is that one?
That one is in D5, which will be D4.
My thinking is, I think we stay with the wording of the staff. I think this is all things that we're doing differently. And I think that we see where this lands us and see, and maybe I'm thinking the staff will do their due diligence over time to see if there are concerns, like our public architect has mentioned, that if there are multiplexes that are asking that, why is this not applying to us, or if there's any concerns raised by the public, we just ask the staff to record it and to kind of notify us. And then also, that would feed into future modifications.
Yeah, and then it comes back around to another decision that's like this one, which is still a motion in the right direction. It's still progress, but it's also progress that's educated. So that we know, you know, two years down the road, maybe it's not a big impact or maybe it's a huge impact, and it's something that needs to be changed a lot more promptly than two years.
Any other discussion? Yeah, go ahead. Yes, Carl?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I apologize. The same section of code, there is a reduction for multifamily that's built in here under Section A. So I'm going to just read a couple sentences really quickly. The proposed language begins with "on-street parking spaces aligning with a property's street furniture may be counted towards up to 50% of the required off-street parking requirements." So that's for single-family and two-family. Now, for other use types, "off-street parking and loading shall be provided in accordance with 170500 of this title with the following exceptions and additions." Go to Section A. "Off-street parking requirements may be reduced by up to 30%, and we've removed commercial office and mixed-use." So for up to 30% for development with a building footprint of less than 5,000 square feet. So that's Section 4. Now for previously 5. Those first two sentences are specific to two-family and single-family. Everything after that is if it's commercial or multifamily. So multifamily would be subject to that Section A there.
So 20% of it.
So there would be a reduction for multifamily built in there as well as to that for commercial.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Any other discussions on the changes? With that, I would like to entertain a motion.
I will move to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to Title 17, zoning regulations, binding the amendments in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the criteria listed in Chapter 17.O2.180. And with the option of revisiting in six months, 1704-220-D2.
Do I have a second? There is a motion by Anderson and a second by Marley. Aisling, call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Marley?
Yes.
Chanda?
Yes.
Yes.
In leaders.
Before we close our meeting, I just want to thank staff and you guys from the public for coming for this. I think it's very important to get input from everybody, and I know you guys have worked really, really hard on it. So thank you for that very much. And at that, Aisling, please note the time for the end of the meeting.